We acknowledge we are gathered on Treaty I and Treaty II territories, and that Manitoba is located on the treaty territories and ancestral lands of Anishinaabe, Anishinaugac, Cree, Ojai Cree, Dakota Oitaiye, the Minnsulin, Ojibwe, and Nehtauiaq. We acknowledge Manitoba is located on the homeland of the Red River Métis. We respect the spirit and intent of treaties and treaty making, and remain committed to working in partnership with First Nations, Inuit, Métis people in the spirit of truth, reconciliation, and collaboration.
Reeve, any mention of white man in there?
Be it resolved that the agenda is adopted as presented. Can I have a motion? Motion by Councilor Maxwell, seconded by Councilor Brown. Call for question, all in favor. Let's carry. Okay. Down the brass tacks here, be resolved that the meeting be recessed for a scheduled public hearing on the following matter: New road in subdivision application 4116-24-8633. Moved by Councilor Maxwell, seconded by Councilor Gohann. Call for question, all in favor. And let's carry. Is there any preamble in there, Holly? Let me see if I can find one from the previous.
I'll go around a bit for you.
Just a quick second here, folks.
Sorry. Oh. Forgot it, so.
Forgot it? Okay, keep this up.
Call public hearing to order.
The purpose of the public hearing is to receive representations from the applicant and any persons who wish to make them. We will first hear from the applicant, then from those present who wish to make representation, starting with anybody who wants to speak in favor of the proposal. At the end of the other presentations, the applicant will have an opportunity to respond. At the end of each presentation, the members of council may ask for clarification from the speaker on any fact or issue, but will not enter into a debate. Person speaking must address the chair. If they have questions that they think the applicant should answer, they should raise them in their presentation to the chair. The applicant will have an opportunity to respond to questions when the other presentations are finished. This is also not the time to question the members of council. Under the Planning Act, the purpose of the public hearing is for council to receive representations, and a discussion or argument involving members of council is inappropriate. There should be no interruption while the person is making a presentation, and order must be maintained. So Ken... Applicant is here. Would you like to come forward, state your name, and make your presentation?
Sure. I'm with Veronica Maxwell Group. Bernard Bier. We are looking simply to put this road allowance, not even a road really, through, which we were required to do supposedly, so that we wouldn't landlock the parcels to the west. We have no intention of building a road right to the west or anything, period, ever. All we're looking to do is have, basically, if this... Look at this as a farm property. We need an approach onto the land. That's all we need. From there on in, we'll handle it ourselves. This will not be some big, super highway or roadway or anything. It's simply an approach onto our land. End of story. And we'll maintain it if necessary.
Is there anybody else here who wants to speak in favor of the application?
Ken Peters. Been involved in some subdivisions and charitable places and stuff, and the road seems to be on private property, so to speak, so I don't understand why it's an issue to not just have a road, which isn't being used, and we're not asking you to maintain it or anything. So I can't see what the problem would be to have a road there.
I didn't try to charge that. I was the original owner of that property. Now, Brandon does need a truck stop. For new people in Brandon, what? Lighthops of traffic on the Trans-Canada Highway on everybody's private lot, because there's no other bloody place to park. This is what these people are after. Is that so terrible? It's a detriment for Brandon. Now, it's not... You know, they're spending a lot of money here. For what? I don't know. Because Brandon does need this. The trucking industry needs it. You take the trucks from Winnipeg, they get to Brandon by five o'clock, the Husky Park and Lot's full. You can't put a mouse in there. I know that. He's occupied the trucking business for fifty years. And there's no place outside of... And parking on the shoulder of the road is not a safe place to be. So that's... I'm all for it. I think if you keep putting good this forward, don't waste your time, because you're gonna lose it. Okay? Thank you.
I'm Darren from Surf Holdings. We have the property just south of them, the eight acres. We have no reason that we would oppose that.
Do you need a full name?
Darren Schreger.
You want to spell it for me? Thank you.
Anybody else want to speak in favor of the application?
I'm sorry, Mr. Kardash. What was your first name? George?
George Kardash, yeah.
Thank you.
He's hard to hear, he's in his throat.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, just Robert Dole, just area resident. I think it's a good deal. There's no reason why it shouldn't be put in place as soon as possible, and I'm all for it, for their project.
I'm sorry, can you spell your name for me? Sorry. Robert.
D.E.L.B.A.U.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak in favor?
My name is William Stewart. S.T.E.W.A.R.T.
Thank you.
I've been part of the group here to sort of set up the security process for the thing. I've always liked Brandon area. I've come out here quite often, friends, and stuff in the area. And I just think that for the Brandon area, this would be a good... More innovative, so that's just all I have to say.
Would anybody else like to speak in favor?
Glenn Hudson, former chief of PAG's First Nation Treaty I. And I know with all the preamble in terms of reconciliation and, you know, working with First Nations Indigenous people, that's something that we're in pursuit of in terms of having partnerships, whether it's with municipalities, the province, or even the federal government. And I know with what's happening today across this country, they're looking to open up trade even within the barriers of the provinces. I couldn't believe and understand why there would be barriers amongst provinces when there's many needs across this country that can be addressed in helping not only the Indigenous people, but helping everyday Canadians right across this country. And Brandon's in a period of growth right now, along with, you know, the province of Manitoba. And certainly, this little thing, I'll say, in terms of the much larger perspectives of putting a road in, is significantly beneficial in terms of that subdivision and having access to that land. Whether you want to continue to farm it or whether you want to put a truck stop in, you know, that adds to the economy of this country, adds to the economy of this region. And I think it's important that we all work together in terms of seeing that through. We're not in a competing interest, I don't believe. The person that we're competing with is Trump today and around the world. And within Canada, they're looking to open up these borders. And the simple thing of putting in a road allowance, and a road just... I don't know. I just can't understand, you know, the amount of, I guess, effort it takes just to do that. And I would request that around that decision, any documentation that is in place and what that process is in order to achieve that, whether that has to go to a public hearing and the timeframe associated with that, for everybody to understand, rather than misunderstanding, I guess, in terms of what the process is. So from my perspective, it's a good thing. Treaty I perspective, Treaty II, and certainly for the region and this city. My mother went to university here in Brandon, got her degree. And it's important for us to continue that growth. So putting in a road allowance and subdividing land is a simple thing. And let's just get it done. It'll help everybody. My good.
Anybody else like to speak in favor of the application? Okay. Are there anybody in the audience here that would like to speak against the application? Okay, come forward and state your name.
Yes. My name's Teresa Campbell. I'm a resident, just out that way. What are we here for today? I thought it was for a road, but they're talking subdivision. Like, am I...
It's a subdivision. It's a road on their property, yes.
Right. So road on their property. Would that connect to the existing service road?
There is no service road there now.
Well, to the existing one?
No.
On our road. But, okay, so our service road ends at that property.
Yeah.
They... You guys... Is...
Part of this project is not... Does not include that service road.
So why did the developer to the west of us have to create a service road to connect to our service road? If these developers are going to have to. And I'm not that I wanted it, but I'm just lost in communication.
Is that the problem? Is that the problem? That was Manitoba transportation and infrastructure.
And are they involved in this decision?
They're involved in the certification. Well, they approved... They removed all their concerns about this particular application of opening a road on their property.
Members of a hybrid house?
Yes.
They removed all their concerns?
On their property?
Yeah.
We're not talking about the service road.
Yeah.
This is nothing to do with the service road yet.
So when does the service road come into play?
That's not a test.
So it's not something you guys or the developers have to put in place before anything starts?
We don't know what the province may ask for that.
Again, that jurisdiction falls under the province, and it's not up to us to impose our will on the province for their service road. Even though if a service road does get built, as one was built in front of your house, the province downloads that onto the municipality to maintain, even though it's their road. But they haven't indicated to us anything in terms of a timeline or even if that road is going to be built anytime soon.
Okay. So the purpose... This is my husband Ken.
Yeah, Ken. I just would like a tiny bit of clarification if you can. My understanding, when we had our approach removed and the road put in, that was the mandate from MIT or whatever they call, was to get a service road cleared at Brandon. So as people develop, my understanding, through the last procedure we went through, that's still going through, that they... Anybody developing there would have to put a service road across the front of the property.
Okay, but that's not why we're here today. That is...
That's not what we're discussing.
Yeah.
We're just... Well, and even what I care to ask of you doing on the property, I'm just more concerned...
I care what you're doing.
Sorry.
A truck wash is not sit well with me.
They're not building a service road. Where along the highway is it?
Well, they learned last time either until my team said they had to. That's what happened to us, when in front of our place. And then they took our approach.
Oh, wow, yeah. But that was in Congress, the highways proved out. The approach not wide enough.
We're not very happy with the highways either. We're on the same page. We're working with the RMT to do our whole thing, that's all.
I really have not heard from Teresa yet. She's been interrupted several times.
You gotta talk. Can we look to Ms. Campbell?
So what's...
No problem.
No, 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 no. Just one second, sir.
So, okay, so this road has nothing to do with the service road as of today?
That's right.
Okay. So are we going to be kept in the loop when MIT does come back and say, yes, the service road does have to go right through? Because that is right. We were told that ten years ago.
Yeah.
Well, it would be MTI that would build that road.
No. No.
It's not what happened next door to us.
The developer builds the road. That's what happens in the west of us.
Well, that's not...
That's what happened. Trust me, that's...
And it took years for that service road to be built.
And I see some here that never built a hundred-four-lane highway. They asked me if I wanted to build a service road. And I said, no. All the service roads is the garden. People, I would pull in that, and I forget what it's like. I can't imagine. So they don't need that. They have a service road from the east side of their property to the approach on the Trans-Canada. That's what they're gonna use. They're not gonna go west.
I'm not... I'm not speaking, George. I don't know for a fact. I just know that Biden's... In the last one, they made them both.
This is not the last one. So if I can speak in honor or speak to the chair, we have zero plans of dealing with MOT, MIT. We've dealt with them in the past. And believe me, I hate their frickin' policies and their guts. So we are not going to be building on their empty road. We're gonna be building a hundred road. We're gonna come onto our property, end the story. And we're not gonna connect to the west end where you are at all. If a hundred years from now, twenty years from now, MIT says, well, we're gonna force you to build an off-ramp here and come on and exit. Well, that's up to them. And you guys can fight a new battle with them. But what the Reeve and the council say today, all this is about is us coming off Hunter Road, building a new approach onto our land, that's it. We're not even gonna build a road there. We're gonna have a parking lot. The street is gonna look like it's not... You're not even gonna know there's a street there. It's just gonna be... Making lines on the pavement, that's all. That's all it's gonna be.
I guess the service road issue will have to cross that bridge when it presents itself.
As long as we're made aware of it, that's all.
You would. Totally be no reply to that either.
And we're not like, I have meters.
Yeah.
So the service road that one was constructed here in MIT would be a condition of the subdivision. Currently, at this very moment, with their removed objection, it is not a condition of the subdivision. I can't say that'll never change, will change. I have no idea. That's up to MIT. But as of right now, it's not a condition of their subdivision.
Okay. How did you say? Did that answer your question?
No, because I don't understand all of this. It's all mud to me. So when is the hearing for the subdivision?
So what has to happen is we've got to change it from egg eighty to...
No, hold on, that's the zoning.
Ozoning.
The subdivision hearing is...
There is no hearing that's required for a subdivision, only if there's a new road in place. That's what the hearing is today.
So when you say a new road, it's an approach?
Basically, the approach is off our property. It's...
It's a public road.
It's on our own.
It's a public road.
It's a public road.
It's not an access.
The sound that we've been providing to the public road, Hunter Road, into your property?
Yeah.
Subdividing our lots into five?
Yeah. Five, that's right.
So that's what it is. So had there not been a need for a public road, we wouldn't have had it being called. The subdivision is simply to split the land.
Yeah.
And that's what we're doing.
We're only gonna develop the farthest little piece in the far corner, opposite of where you guys are. If you're to the west, we're not developing any of that there. We have no future plans for that period. We're developing a little far, twelve acres on the far side. That's just not even... But we had to put... We were forced to put this road application in. Otherwise, we're landlocking other land, okay? So we can't landlock other land. And because we aren't working with highways and trying to get a service road through there, if we were doing all that, then we'd have a problem. We'd have to have this road open because we've just come off the west the other night. So we're actually doing you a lot of a favor. We're not... We're doing the opposite of what... We're not hurting you guys in any way, shape, or form.
This is what they want for you. So Hunter Road towards Brandon? Or west?
The only parts we're developing is this piece right in the corner. And this is where our signs and utilities are built. So we're just developing that little piece. Over here is where you guys are down there somewhere. Our Shanks is way over there a mile. We're not even thinking of any of that.
You're developing right here?
Yeah, that part.
Or stay right here?
Nothing. Yeah, you're over here somewhere. I know where you guys are.
Okay. But a truck wash is what you're proposing?
No, we're not proposing a truck wash right now.
But a truck stop?
We're not proposing anything of this type. We're proposing a subdivision, a road opening here, and that's all. This is about a subdivision.
Anybody else want to speak?
Do you have Dorothy and Murray?
Yes, we did receive one other objection.
So I can read that now unless there's someone else that wants to go. But this is from Dorothy Rayner and Murray Simpson. Murray and I do object to the new road as it will create a lot more traffic past us. Right now, the service road is a dead end at the east end, so no one can go any further, supposedly. This would be remedied if the service road went right through, but would create other problems, the worst of which would be the traffic coming from the east down the service road to Shanks and the rest of the development. Dust control would certainly be an issue, and it is now with all of the increased traffic at the west end of the service road visibly. Visibility is very poor if there is more than one vehicle on the road. If the extension is treated like the west end of the current service road, there will be a lot more washboard, especially if trucks are using it. The road would have to be graded a lot more regularly than it has been up to now. At the risk of being repetitive, the traffic certainly has increased on the service road since the development of Shanks. And I'm sure if you will get... And I'm sure it will get busier as the development grows. So if the road goes straight through to Hunter Road, there will be a lot more traffic coming from both ways. It's bad enough now that we have to drive one mile... Over a mile west to two seventy to get onto the number one east to go to Brandon. And a through road would put an end to that. But in our opinion, it would bring worse conditions and consequences. We would rather drive the extra distance to two seventy. Please consider this our letter objection to the opening of the new road per plan 4116-24-8633.
That's not a service road.
Again, we're not... I'm not, you know, I'm not debating her. I'm just giving you her objection.
So what happens when there become numerous vehicles on Hunter Road and accessing the highway? And you guys grant this, and then MIT comes back and says, this isn't gonna work. What happens then?
Well, if it is planned out properly and, you know, at some stage, the developers come to community planning and their plan is passed around, there will be other studies done and other things like traffic control measures put into place to ensure, you know, proper throughput of vehicles if that is what is gonna happen in that area.
Well, Mr. Chair, as well, this has been circulated by community planning to all the government departments. MTI is one of them. So they've already seen it. It's not like they haven't seen it. They have not made the recommendation for service.
Awesome.
That's... So they've already been in the loop.
But their... One of their conditions is a traffic study.
Right.
And remember, their traffic study got us. Service road. Didn't our approach close?
Can I speak for a minute? I'll tell you, we're doing these things favorably. We're not bringing more traffic. We're actually taking traffic away from your area. We're diverting them long before your place. If you live west of there, between there and Shanks. And if we do something there, what we're planning to do, we're gonna pave the road. So you won't have dust. You will have a much better than you have now, okay? And I'm very sorry about MIT taking out your crossover approach. I think that's crazy. If you guys now have to drive a mile on washboard gravel, that's the dumbest thing I ever heard of. And I don't think council, very hot people are either. You can blame that one on MIT, and let's start fighting together. We're on your side.
So anybody have any more questions or clarifications that they need answered? Anybody want to speak for or against the application? Be resolved that the public hearing be closed at 4:57 PM, and we return to the meeting. I have a motion. Motion by Councilor Maxwell, seconded by Councilor Brown. Call for question, all in favor? And that's carried. Three point two. Whereas applicant Richmond Surveys MLS Limited and the property owner, Verica Management Incorporated of Northeast 321019 West, Rule Number 83050, Subdivision Application Number 4116-24-8633.
I'm gonna hang on till we get...
One minute.
I just want to get Counselor Brown back.
Sorry.
It's okay.
Whereas applicant Richmond Surveys MLS Limited and property owner of Verica Management Incorporated of Northeast 321019 West, Rule Number 83050, Subdivision Application Number 4116-24-8633, proposes to subdivide a sixty-two-point-two-six acre parcel to create four new commercial lots and one small lot that will be a shared well. Subject property is located adjacent to Highway One with access through Hunter Road. The subject application is proposing a shared well to be connected to four lots and a single separate field that will service all four lots. And whereas, as the subdivision creates a new road, the required public hearing was held on July 3rd, 2025. Therefore, be it resolved that council hereby approve the subject said application subject to the following conditions. The application... Sorry, the applicant to obtain a zoning bylaw amendment to reclass a current title from Agriculture General Zone Eighty, Ag Eighty, to Rural Commercial Zone RC. The applicant enter into a development agreement with the municipality. Let the applicant submit payment to the municipality in the amount of $2,500 on every lot created by the subdivision for the Cornwallis Capital Development Levy Bylaw, Number 1644-09-2013. Traffic impact study to be completed and any improvements required by MTI and the municipality to be constructed at the developer's cost. Drainage plan to be prepared, meeting any other conditions and requirements of subject as are necessary. Somebody want to make that motion? Motion by Counselor Maxwell, seconded by Counselor Drowham. Discussion?
So the way I understand it, Mr. Chairman, this subdivision, once approved by this council, this information is then taken by the applicant to community planning to proceed to the next level. And the next time this council will see it is to do a zoning bylaw after they've met their condition. At that zoning bylaw, there will be a public hearing to allow people to speak. And then it will be passed and it will be rezoned to commercial. That's the way I understand it. Do you might correct in that?
Yeah, pretty much, except for we give notice to community planning that we've approved it. And this is a condition of the approval.
So this takes back to the province as soon as you agree? It takes back to the province?
Yeah. Counselor Brown, you have anything you want to mention?
No, it basically states it right there. It's a process and, you know, by the Planning Act, this is one step of a couple more to go, which would be the zoning and the hearing, the zoning. So it could be done relatively quick if some of our conditions are met relatively quick from the developers. I understand some of it is already maybe taken care of already. So this is what it has to be.
The one thing that I wanted to mention was when Glenn was speaking about corridors, east-west corridors for the inter provincial trading and the new federal legislation for truckers only being able to drive certain distances every day. And, you know, Mr. Kardashian's comments there about hiding out on the side of the road is not safe for truckers. I agree with that. So providing them a safe place for, you know, refueling, sleeping is important, as well as it creates that east-west corridor for inter provincial trade, which is a new thing for us in Canada. So I do think it's a good thing. And we have one chance to get this right. And so that's why we are taking our time with this. And we have to protect the needs and the concerns of the municipality and the residents of the municipality to make sure that their voices are heard as well. So, yeah, we echo a lot of the concerns that they have. But at the same time, it's a balancing act between providing services that are needed for economic growth and people who live in or near these types of developments. So I'll call to the question.
Do you have any one comment? Right now, all it is is land being split up. But it has the potential to be what it's supposed to be, which is why we, granted, it took a long time to get to the development plan, which wasn't necessarily. But the development plan calls for commercial type businesses to be there, and that's what the municipality wants. And that's what we are trying to follow processes carefully as we can to make sure that it's done right so that nothing happens in that process. The development plan says it needs to be there and it needs to move on to zoning. And the province does their thing. And we're trying to go as quickly as we can for the developer. And hopefully, it works out as quick as possible.
Just one more thing I want to mention too. This council has the opportunity to deny this. But at the same time, because of our development plan, the applicant has the right to appeal. And we know what happens if it's going to be in a simple board. We can deny. But if it fits into our development plan, which it does, then they're going to receive. And all that's going to do is delay everything. And nobody wants that.
Call for the question. All in favor? Whereas counsel and the C A O are satisfied with the financial and administrative services provided by Kerry Lawless. Therefore, be resolved that the amended employment agreement with Kerry Lawless be extended for an additional six months to December 31, 2025. Motion by Counselor Drowham, seconded by Counselor Brown. Any discussion on that?
You might know.
Some of the services that Kerry's provided for us have been invaluable. He's dug us out of the period where our financial record keeping was a mess. We have just finished our 2022 audit and will be starting the 2023 audit right away. Also, with our search for a permanent C A O coming onboard, it'll be a short amount of time before that person is onboard as well. And we can leave it up to that person, the permanent C A O, to decide if we need Kerry services beyond that date. If that person is able to do a lot of the services that Kerry provides for us, we may not need his services beyond December 31st. So I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Kurt, Reeve, or we're good to go?
You're good to go.
Okay, thank you very much, Reeve and counsel. Members, thank you.
So I do have the development agreement. I just, I haven't had, we just talked about it briefly. I don't have it in front of you. I'm, we do have a resolution to already enter into it. So I just want to let you folks know that I think this is going to be complete.
That's good. That's good. Yeah.
Yeah.
So are we going in camera then? Or we already discussed that?
Your choice.
What's that?
Close over drinking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we need to go in camera? Okay. Motion adjourned by Counselor Brown, seconded by Counselor Maxwell. Call for question. All in favor? That's Kerry. What's that?
Finish what? I can see that a lot.
Well, we were supposed to do it after, but we've done it before, so.
Kill the bee.
Yeah.
Kill the bee.
Yeah.
Hold that one right now.